Okay, this is Park County Commission, um, special meeting Tuesday, May thirty-one at ten o'clock. This is a budget workshop, workshop format, discussion only, no decisions will be made. Erica.
Good morning. So Matt is here to discuss Public Works. A lot of his projects, we've actually reviewed this part of the CIP. And he's done a pretty detailed presentation to his boards. And I know you do have a proposal for another position if you want to start discussing that.
Sure. Um, so looking at the amount of work I have and the amount of engineering work we do. I am interested in looking at doing a county engineer position. It would kind of be an assistant to me and county engineer. That would be someone that would need to have a PE because they would design some of our easier bridge projects. Stuff like the bridge deck replacements. They're usually about ten thousand dollars to have designed, but they're not difficult engineering by any means. You know, some of these MSET projects that are big six hundred thousand dollar projects probably would still have to go out to Staley. But this person will be able to do that. They could also assist with, you know, refuse assessments, airport board leases. And that sort of thing. If that's something you guys are interested in, I'll do more research into it. I've just kind of hit the preliminary level at the moment. And then additionally, they could do onsite inspection for engineering projects, like even MSET projects. State that we're designing them. They could be the person that's onsite at Cook City, doing all the bridge inspection. Which probably on years we have MSET projects that by itself would pay for the position right here. But if that's something you guys would be interested in me exploring further, I can work with Erica and see more what that would be.
I think it's worth a look. And you're saying that the majority, if not all of this work is currently being done by Staley?
Uh, a fair amount, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, yeah, I mean, if it pencils out and we could bring the work in-house, so we can more closely supervise it, I mean, it's worth looking at.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah, you know, your discussion and the information you provided last week suggested there's a fair expectation of breaking even or doing better.
Yeah.
And that would be a win-win.
Yep.
About office space?
That would be tricky, but I feel like figure that out whether they need to be at the road shop or stuff like that. Make the space work. So, yeah. I can look into that more.
That'd be great.
Um, so I don't know if you want to start at the road or?
Different one you would like to go with.
Okay, well, I go in front of her, so.
Twenty-one-ten?
Twenty-one was ten.
Sounds good.
And, um, I'm sorry, I'm sort of low. I don't have the full former presentation. It just basically, we go through the revenues. And I don't think I have anything significant different in there.
The only thing different we have in revenue this year is that five fifty from Phil. That's what we discussed with, uh, the project on Old Yellowstone Trail, that additional hundred and fifty thousand for the next three years. And then we can get that road paid in-house and save a fair amount of money. One of the big things with that is we also have the Cook City project this year, which strains our budget. So, um, that hundred and fifty thousand allows us to get that done. Or additional hundred and fifty allows us to get that done in the same budget here.
And then the sale of fixed assets was higher last year because we had some equipment we tricked it in.
Yep.
And so we won't have that this year.
Potentially. And a little bit of when our graders get here, hopefully that's this fiscal year. And then we did put in for MSET in two years from, uh, or for the Hammond Creek Bridge over Rock Creek. That's a six hundred thousand dollar project. I believe we can do that in-house. MSET pays fifty percent, so that would pay for materials, a contractor to come in to drive piles and a crane operator for about a week. And that would be about three hundred thousand and then the other three hundred thousand would be my crew going in there and installing it. If we were to do that, uh, then we need a new excavator that's got a little bit more load lifting capacity. A little more reliability than our current one. We don't find out if we get that grant until February, so my plan at the moment is kind of wait until we get closer to that time to see where we rank on that list. Even though, uh, time to get an excavator from when we order it's about seven months, it sounds like. I think that would be the fiscally responsible thing to do is wait to that point.
So this work could be handled by one of the excavators we have on order now?
Uh, we don't have an excavator on order.
I thought we did.
No, I've been looking, I'm looking at one and pricing it out, that sort of thing. We've got the grader on, we've got three graders coming, uh, one additional one on order that'll come in September. But we just have our current excavator right now. And we don't have it in a bunch to be replaced. Looking at it, it would be about twenty-five thousand a year over ten years with the BN loan. The current one we have is less quality and it's lasted, I think, twenty years. So I think that would be, be pretty fair, especially because the first year with an MSET project, we pay for it.
And it's a, just, the other question is, is that replacement of that excavator somewhere in the CIP on an out-year or is that?
It hasn't been so far.
Okay. But if we can pay for it with one project?
Yep, and that would be, yeah, it would pay for it in one project, but then the hope would be every two years we can have an MSET project. We do, unless it's a bridge over the Yellowstone, we do it in-house. Those ones we just can't do. And then additionally, all the, uh, bridge deck replacements that we need to do. It worked pretty well this year on Jardine, but that's not necessarily a larger bridge deck.
Right.
So some of the large bridge, bridge deck replacements, it would be nice to have that excavator with a little more lifting capacity.
As we head into payroll, but so I guess the three percent call in and then the discussion for next week has been developed, so it doesn't have any additional. So just be aware of that.
Well, you know, the five percent for the elected officials was approved with the compensation board, so I don't know if that makes, gives you a head start or not, so.
Right, I just haven't had time to actually put the figures in. So I should have done mine next week. I'll have more information on that. But I haven't had a chance to work it and stuff it. Because we've had one last week.
Yeah.
So, um.
I did up the, the fuel, gas, diesel, because that's more expensive. With the knowledge that we're getting newer graders, newer equipment that's more fuel efficient. So hopefully that kind of offsets itself, that we should be using less fuel, but it'll be more expensive.
So did you actually chose it staying flat for fuel gas diesel or should it be going?
Um, actually, let's up that to one forty. Uh, no, no, not one forty, excuse me, one at twenty thousand, one twenty-five. Uh, one thing that we will see kind of after the coming year is with the road shop repairing, um, vehicles for solid waste department. You know, a lot of it'll be a pass-through because we'll have the refuse shop paying for the actual parts to put in the equipment. But we'll have to see this next year how that affects those, those fines.
Do you want to charge time, like, for a transfer price?
Uh, my plan is to just do a straight charge there. And that way we don't have to do every, every hour, um, sort of thing.
Okay. I want to make sure at least it's reflecting the value somehow.
Yes, yeah, my, my plan is to do a straight fee for that and then, um, we'll see after this first year how much time they're actually spending. This year is more because of all the equipment, needed a lot to start, um, and hopefully that goes down.
So utilities, it looks like you dropped it a little bit. And professional services.
Professional services, that drops a lot due to, um, having the two mechanics in-house. So they're doing a lot more work now that we would have taken outside because we just only, we didn't have enough time to do that. So that's the, the reason for dropping that. Same with the outside maintenance or repair services.
So where would you have the, the, uh, transfer for, I guess that's, would you have it?
So we had, so kind of what we did this time is upping Kelly to full-time status. The plan was to split that additional work between road and bridges, uh, or between road and refuse. But because that creates a whole bunch of line items, we're just doing one additional one in refuse. And so then I'm considering the other half of what he does to be kind of the payment for the road shop.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, and we might have to move that and shift that around this next year, just seeing.
See how it goes, yeah.
Yep. Um, you know, if he ends up this summer not doing any solid waste, um, because they, they don't need it, then we can shift it. Or if he ends up being there every Monday helping them out, then we'll shift it the other way, sort of thing.
Okay.
Maglori dropped a lot because we have that in, in-house. This year is going to be a lot of experimentation with cost at least, just to see what it is. I know it'll be a lot less. Uh, we're also looking at the potential of bringing that in on railcar. Where we park the railcar here and do it that way for really cheap. My hope is then we can even do additional roads for cheaper. But again, we'll have to see how that pans out this year.
And you heard that.
Road materials goes down a lot. Uh, this year we were planning to crush, um, some gravel. We didn't need to because we worked with Fisher Pit, uh, to get some cheap costs on gravel. That actually worked out really well because they have to meet state spec for a lot of gravel. And if they have crushing that doesn't hit exactly that, they put it into a, just call it a disposal pile, um, that they can't sell to any state projects. For our projects, if they miss something by one percent, um, it doesn't, you know, to get fifty percent off, I don't care if they miss it by one percent. So we dropped that a lot with the hopes that, um, instead of needing to crush, uh, in the living scenario, we can just use the gravel for Fisher every year and then it's more of a straight cost every year instead of, you know, a large amount one year.
Okay, so the, um, just one quick question on Maglori, what's your total, um, usage on that tonnage-wise? Is a railcar a whole like fifty tons?
Fifty thousand gallons, I want to say. Yeah, because there are semi-trucks about eight, one, uh, ten thousand in the semi-truck.
Okay.
And I would say it's five times the semi-truck, so fifty thousand gallons.
Yeah.
But that's one that if we can get a semi-truck of it in for forty thousand dollars, we'll use it till we're done and.
Yeah.
My expectations will probably go farther than what we've done in the past, so.
Yeah, I'm used to dealing in solid, in solid box. This is like forty-two thousand pounds semi or hundred thousand railcar.
Yep. Uh, just needs to stop raining two inches a weekend.
Yeah, that would help.
What's, uh, what's the outlook for the Pierce pit?
Um, they, well, access to that is, it's something the property owner has to work through. Um, and then if they get the pit going at immigrant, um, that would be easier for us because it's right next to the highway. And, um, we can deliver it through the southern part of the county easier. So that's a, a holding pattern at least for the moment.
You have mid-carrier chips in the way all dropped.
Yep, that dropped a lot. We're not going to do a ton of chip sealing this year. We'll do Jardine and Horse Creek Road, uh, so I dropped that a bit.
I don't know, you're still where you're until the, um, Chickory Road.
I think we're still.
Four years out?
Yeah, three, four years out on that one.
Okay.
And that was, one of the reasons I dropped that is I just don't think we'll have time to do more than that with paving and everything this summer, so.
Got a lot on your plate.
Yeah, uh, yeah, Corey and his guys are doing, doing impressive with everything they're getting done. The chip seal asphalt, um, at two hundred and fifty thousand, that is asphalt for the first third of Old Clyde Park Road. As well as Billman Lane. I think those are the two that we have this year. Equipment rental, that is for the three graders that we have rented, um, forty-one thousand each. Hopefully with the newer equipment we have, we don't need to rent as much other stuff. That is the BN loan money for the, um, paving equipment, some of the chip seal equipment. And, um, the grader that we will hopefully be getting sometime between September and November. We ordered this one from John Deere and John Deere is made in America, so, um, hopefully they don't have quite the lead time.
Um, so I apologize, I didn't get a chance to look at this as closely, but we do have some intercap loans. Did you estimate that in there?
I did not. I just added it to the previous years.
Okay, I'm trying to think. I'm not sure that much we have going through, but, um, you took the previous years and just added in the new BN stuff?
Exactly.
Okay, so it could fluctuate a little bit, just because I have the intercap figures, but.
Okay.
Temporary misplaced and the interest rate to give up a little bit, but I don't feel it'd be significant.
What's the intercap rate now?
I'm thinking it went to two point five.
Wow, that was, that's quite a bump.
Well, they.
This wasn't under two before.
Well, they flattened it and then they.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, and then I did not do the transfer out. Um, is that something I need to do, Erica, or is that you?
Well, that's if you have anything going to, um, forty-ten or forty-eleven.
Oh, okay.
That's where that comes from because forty-ten and forty-eleven don't carry cash typically. So all the money has to come from other funds. So as we look at those, we can.
Gotcha. I was thinking that was for part of my salary.
That could be as well. I think that your salary actually comes from a different line. Let me just. Let me go back here for a second.
Board of Investments says one point five five for intercap. So that's good news. I'm surprised, you know, through February of next year.
That's really good.
Yeah. So it sounds like we should maximize intercap versus going BN?
Yep.
Yeah, we have to stay, but this is an interesting piece with BN, which you can't go over a million dollars in here.
Yeah.
There are some limitations, but.
Because I gotta think Kevin's getting more than one point five on investments now.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Is it newer, newer ones that he just reinvested? It looks like he is, but.
Yeah.
The, the older one's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, you go across the board, I don't think.
No, not across, not on average, because you guys have much longer term.
Okay, so the road, um, there is part of the Public Works Director is in there. You can see this is actually last year's budget. Forty-eleven came from road for, um, for the tractor Melody Dumpin' from Plow. And then nineteen percent Public Works Director, which that cost for point twenty-three. For the Public Works Director Department. Is, um, it's running at a hundred and thirty thousand, but we base it on a hundred and twenty because of some PML citizens. It's a lovely. Times two is about twenty-four thousand coming out of the department.
Okay.
And I don't know what your, um, if you have any anticipated transfers for forty-seven or forty-eleven?
I don't because we were doing most of it BN, so I'm assuming that comes straight out of that loan and principal line item or principal and interest line items.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then we were talking about while we're here, okay, gas and diesel is going to go to one twenty-five. So this actually, um, shows that there's a little capacity for twenty-two thousand, but that could end up if we do intercap or anything like that. Or if you're getting any extra equipment. I'd probably take that up. And even if, if we chose to go to intercap versus a BN, if you got the loan going, you'd probably only have like one payment in February as opposed to two payments. Because we didn't, we'd do the loan until after July first. And the payment schedule is August and February. So we wouldn't have an August payment or we would, it would be like a really small amount of interest. So we're actually tying it into the second half.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
That can give you some plus.
Sounds good. Well, at that interest rate, it sounds like that's something we should look into, so.
Uh, is there anything else on the road department?
What's the bottom line? What is it compared to last year?
For the budget, um, and again, this, the budget doesn't take into the account the changes that you've made this year. It was actually right at five thousand and then that's where the new. So that's where it's looking. The negative means that revenue exceeds expenditures, so you'd have had quite a bit of cut.
But you haven't included that by, or potential five percent for, which is right.
Right.
So that might take that up.
So you're sort of at a wash.
Yeah, okay.
That's really good.
Yeah.
No kidding, yeah.
Yeah, and that's with the one point five. I'm excited to see how it goes.
Another year, you could be a profit center.
There you go.
I'll be working for Matt.
Yeah. I'm hoping that as we get a lot of this, you know, the graders that are fourteen years old replaced with six-year-old graders, so.
Yeah, maintenance cost down.
Yeah, exactly. The maintenance costs will be down, um, the amount of time we have to spend patching roads as we start chip sealing more. Then a lot of that, that goes down and allows us to say, okay, well, you know, we're actually going to pay grandest with through asphalt, not just chips. And the other thing I would like to look at, I think I talked to Steve a little bit about this, but doing some kind of experimentation with Maglori this year to see cost per foot, um, what exactly we can do. And then look at the, um, county option for vehicle licensing, potentially going from, what is it, point five percent to point seven? Is that right?
Yeah, that has to go to.
Yeah, go to a vote, but potentially saying to the taxpayers, like, here's how much it costs us per foot. Here's the roads we would like to, to put Maglori on. That point, extra point two percent, um, could do an additional forty miles of roads or whatever.
As long as you spread those roads out, I think, geographically, I think that makes sense.
Yep, and we do a map showing these are all the roads that we then get Maglori to every year. And as we get more and more, uh, people driving in the county, um, that that can make a big difference.
Yeah, yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, some of these are more investments than expenses and.
Yep.
Should pay off in the future and can't wait to see.
That's the hope.
So what's your timing on calendars for elections? Just because it would have to go over a vote, so.
Um, we won't even know.
Make this year.
Yeah, we won't make this year because they won't know until the end of fall.
Right.
What the cost is.
Yep.
And so then probably that next, whenever that next election cycle would be. And my thought is that'll probably be a a fair amount of advertising to people in the county to let them truly know, like, this isn't just so I can buy bigger, newer toys. Like here's, if you vote for it, here's exactly what we're going to do.
Yeah, this is a project.
Yep, and the percentage of that goes to the city as well, so then we have to get with the city and say, okay, what's your, what, why do you want it? And what would be your, what's your proposal to voters to do that, so.
Do you have a rough guess? I don't know, it's like a dollar five cents per foot for.
We, um, WB Dust Control, their last bid was eighty cents a foot.
Eighty cents?
Or eighty-one cents a foot, somewhere right in that area.
And if we're cheaper.
And I think we can do it for forty cents a foot or less.
So we could do actually a lot.
Yep, because a lot of that is, you know, they've got a very nice expensive truck, but just the cost of operating that and spraying it is a fair amount. And then we have to pay for all their labor, obviously, to do it.
Of course, we also got to pay for ours.
Yeah, we have to pay for ours, but my thought is, or the hope is that the second guy spraying the road behind the grader, if that eliminates, you know, four more trips by the grader out there, um, that one additional guy is worth it.
Cost savings, yeah.
Yep.
Um, I just started, started moving on a little bit to the bridge fund. If he goes, okay.
Sure.
Okay, the one thing I did add, then you have the interrupt transfer in, which was blank, but I filled it in with forty. That's the BN loan or the BN paying off the convict rate bridge, which the bridge couldn't support making those payments for that replacement.
It seems like a long time ago.
Keeps on giving.
Yeah.
And then, um, payroll is interesting because it looks like it actually dropped. And I don't know if we changed how we were doing it. Do you have a bridge fuel diesel?
Probably twenty-three again.
Even with fuel costs, huh?
I think bridge, just because it's not.
Not as strict.
Yeah, we're not as much, not as much to it.
Yeah.
Not the grader strapping around the county, sort of thing.
I'm just doing that. Depending on how you look at it, it, um, makes things appear and disappear, so. Depending on how you look at it, it, um, makes things appear and disappear, so. And right now the bridge, um. Is looking like it's actually over a chip special. Sort of hard to see here. With the glare, detail on the glare.
This one's not, I noticed it on yours, though, right when you sat down.
Okay, so if I go back over to the bridge. It's actually showing you have a hundred and twenty-five of a budget. Is that what you're recommending?
I think, yep, um, with the, um. Cook City Bridge Project, um, it is a bit over budget this year.
Well, this is actually for next year.
Well, yeah, yeah, uh, this year, but it doesn't start till July first.
Okay, um, so with that, because through the, is the, you have a transfer out, is that going to be for? You have that detailed? So it's going to the the gas tax?
Yep, because we have a hundred and fifty from gas tax, we have a hundred and fifty from bridge, um. And then the twenty-four, I think, was for me, if that's right.
Probably.
Yeah.
But the concern is that dear hundred thirty, I'm not sure if there's that much cash.
Okay.
In the bridge account to pay for it. So when we look at, um. If your expenditure exceeds your revenues and you have what cash is available.
Okay, I thought last time you looked it was two hundred and fifty or so.
Okay, let's take a look. And you could be right. I'm sorry, I'm sort of jumping from project to project, so I have to remind myself as I go as well. Where we're at was.
I always enjoy doing this with you.
So we're at fifty-three for cash. We do have name taxes coming in that haven't been interfaced yet. So I would expect that number to go up, but it is something we'll have to keep an eye on.
Okay.
After we did the June taxes in to make sure.
Sure.
That we have enough cash and if there's an issue, we might. Road cash or something like that, we'll make a balance.
Okay.
Anyway.
Wow, for years, we never had road cash.
Well, FEMA helped with road cash, the flooding two thousand eighteen and nineteen flooding. Situation, so it flopped around. But that's where it stands right now. And that's with, um. And the payroll is slightly smaller and I'd have to look at that at that point, why payment? Less, but I think, um, with the mechanics and the pay rates and stuff, that could play.
Okay. Yep, and I, if you want to scroll down just a little bit. Um, like that ten thousand and fourteen, um, those ones I haven't changed up, that's enough for. Um, you know, smaller bridge projects like the Potter Creek Bridge, um, just doing the wood that we did to replace that this year. Um, was eight thousand, that wouldn't cover the cost of, you know, a ready deck on a new bridge. Um, but if we have something pop up where we have to do smaller bridge maintenance, that should help.
Sure.
Potter Creek got someone off, uh, what, Cottonwood, Cottonwood bench?
Um, that is just north of Will Sol.
Yeah.
Um, it's a neat old bridge, but it's probably got a ten-year lifespan, so the wood might survive the, uh.
Yeah.
The steel.
Yeah.
That's between the highway and.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, okay. There, Daisy Dean is close by and.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ready for next? Um, we don't spend a lot of time on meat and stuff, but I can just pull it up. So I went through weed with Teresa Pospico, we just have about within a thousand dollars where revenue exceeds expenditure. And pretty much everything's the same. And we just look at the cash balance, um, at the end of the year after it's done to make sure. We don't exceed the thirty-three and a third percent for taxes and anything over ends up going into the weed C I P fund.
Okay.
And so we just look at that. And then we have the airport fund. And right now, that looks like we will have cash surplus and again, we look at that at year end. We don't have much in the way, uh, those are the grants. And so I don't know, I haven't really spent as much time on incorporating the grant information in.
Yeah, um.
So we'll have to take a look at that and we can review that later.
Yep.
Have we got an estimate on landing fees?
I have done, I have not put that in there, um.
Let's go ahead and we'll just hold off on the airport and we'll review it another day.
Okay.
If that's okay. Because I think it needs a little more.
I have no idea if I bet Gabriel would have an estimate.
Yeah, um, I did of the, um, amount that we got for land leases by quite a bit, um, simply because just those two. Two large leases bringing in fifteen thousand a year is quite a bit, um.
Almost comparable to everybody else.
Yeah. And so it's up by, I want to say, yeah, almost like seventy percent or something. I felt like going up farther than that made me feel, um. Speculatory, speculative, uh, even though landing free fees should bring in quite a bit more.
Yeah, I've heard thirty thousand, fifty thousand, but I have no idea.
Okay.
He's substantial, though.
Well, which I'll have to pay for, the repair they have to go through because those matchups get pretty significant every five years.
Yeah.
That funding to be able to support that.
Yep.
Um, mosquito were just, you know, within three hundred dollars, um, as far as that goes, again, I went through that.
Could be a good mosquito year.
We are looking at doing a bit more, uh, larvicide this next year, um, and so my hope is. That we don't have to do nearly as much adult aside environmentally better and also should take care of the mosquitoes if we can kill them at the source. And we don't have to go around town and find where the nesting sort of thing.
Oh, makes sense.
Yeah, there's a lot like, uh, uh, the old OXPO. Kind of between the interstate and the bird area, um, you know, that's I'm sure just a huge breeding spot for mosquitoes, so. Going and treating those sorts of places along the Yellowstone, um, where there's just lots of stagnant water. Hope it's that. Or a lot cheaper that gets a lot more result.
Chickory just is doing the collections until they hit the big project.
That's basically on them, right? That's. And that's their money, not our money.
It's their money, her assessments, so they're not taxes because it's just on the neighborhood parcels.
Right.
They think it accepts to fly up ready per parcel.
Yep, but then we supervise the work done with that money, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, but we're collecting it every annually so that when you go to the big repayment project or. Project is that the funds are sitting there ready.
Yep.
For it. Um, gas tax, I don't know if I haven't received any much year yet, I think.
Uh, this year it ups for their final increase with Barca funds, uh, and so I do have that jumping from. I think a hundred and twenty. I thought I put it in there, but I guess it.
Where's it coming to go? Was it all for Cooks and Virtues?
Yep.
Okay, so you were, I think you. A hundred and fifty?
Yep, jumping from a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty.
Okay, and then, um, you said. So, and, um, so that's actually goes here. And then for T C F, which is now M C F, is that right? How much are we anticipating?
That is four hundred and eighty thousand.
For next year?
Yep, total for the project. Or for M C F total for the project is four eighty, ours is four eighty as well. Some of it's already expended because we did design work.
Correct, and then we're going to transfer in from the road is. Bridge, sorry.
A hundred and fifty in for bridge.
Okay, so right now it looks like we're high because you have your capital outlay at three thirty, but we have two hundred and five. Does that, does that capital outlay, does that kind of change that?
Capital outlet should be that, um, seven eighty, I think. Or what's the three hundred, yeah, seven eighty?
Perfect.
Yep.
You're a lot nicer nowadays than you were years ago on these budgets.
Uh, who is who?
You.
I am?
You don't glare at Matt like he used to glare at me.
Yeah, but you were trying to.
I know, that's true.
Junk vehicles all balanced out, we actually haven't gotten the final, like, there's like this final gyration we're getting through submitting. Um.
Is that a state, um, data, is that just to funds used as available or is that our funds available as used?
No, they tell us how much the award is.
Okay.
And then we budget based on what the award is and.
Good, I was never clear on that.
That goes all over the place, doesn't it?
What's that?
Kind of goes all over the place, doesn't it?
No, the amount we get is actually pretty consistent, yes, it is, um, because if you look up here. Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty steady.
Yeah, and then back here I have more history, thirty-four, thirty-five, so it actually is just like on a gradual increase.
Is that just a general fund appropriation from the state or is that funded by a?
That actually is money that we collect from the motor vehicle department, goes into the state and then the state distributes it back.
Okay.
And.
So there is a tied funding source.
And they tell us exactly how much we're going to get and then we submit a budget. Based on the information that they provide to us and that's where you have a timing issue, so they said. We're going to get thirty-nine, four oh five, but the budget stuff isn't due for a month or two and you want to see what you have.
Yeah, but there is a legitimate source for it.
Yes. And so we just always make sure it balances and then excess goes into the junk vehicle C I P because at some point. Vehicle to replace.
Right.
But is, is there's no county money going into it.
Right, I knew that, so it's a way to figure out how the funding was sourced.
Twenty-eight forty is just a straight seventy-five hundred that we get from the state because we mill one point six for the meat program.
We also get a variety of grants, so.
Yep, well, this is just the weed and then there's the noxious weed. Which I've been through with Teresa as well. And that one, um, I've started breaking them down into separate projects so we can actually see what's happening. And we're down to. East Milk Creek Road is what we have going on this year. And so we just went through that, so that's pretty much it for the year, noxious weed.
And that's just a plus and minus.
Yes, yeah, and actually there's no impact to the county, you know, so we've got a little admin fee for administration. But we don't get any of that either. But we do, they hand one.
Yeah.
So we do actually put in our own labor.
Yep.
Do it, so forty-ten is, um, those are projects. And but it sounds like we're running everything through twenty-eight, twenty-one.
Yep, twenty-eight, twenty-one, yeah, we have to, the state, I remember you and I looked at this, the state says we have to have that money. In twenty-eight, twenty-one, you can't put twenty-eight, twenty-one in others.
And we didn't have, when forty-ten started, that gas tax didn't exist, so that's what we used as the vehicle for projects. But really, it's sort of moved over because any kind of dollar goes there, so we'll probably see less activity at forty-ten. Forty-eleven is equipment, road and bridge equipment, we'll run through it. So the operating budget sits in road, operating sits in bridge, the C I P projects sit in twenty-eight, twenty-one. And then the equipment sits in forty-eleven.
So this is where the state's mandating that we have a drop slush fund.
You know what? So the thing about C I P is you were not allowed to have, to save, right?
Right.
And save money because of the taxes for the thirty-three and the third, um, restriction. By having a C I P document that allows us to create these C I P funds. Which does allow you to plan for the future, which we couldn't do before. Right now, it's not like we have a cash sitting in these accounts, we just use them as pass-through. But it does allow us to keep the operation somewhat separate from the capital project.
Exactly.
Which there is some benefit because you can see historically what the trending for operations budget is. So, um, I, I like it from that aspect. The airport, we tend to keep more lumped together, so it has wider fluctuations in revenues and.
Yeah, but this, this is actually actually more accurate reflection of the decision process on capital investments versus operating.
Yes, yeah, and so we do have right now. Our transfers in are a little less than our equipment, so we'll have to take a look at that. Because now we're bad showing sort of a budget.
Yeah, I think we have to look so that we don't have that in two places.
Okay.
With, with it being funded by the end.
Yes, yeah, because if you did the entire expenditure, um.
Is, yeah.
What would happen is the money comes into here and then we pay out with the loan repayments at road and bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, that's where, yeah, I have the loan repayments in twenty-ten.
Yes.
Yeah.
But the actual purchase, so what we have right now is, um. I do have a couple hundred thousand in there in M B N F Y twenty-four, so it's more like placeholder and that could show why we. Like we're over budget, but we're not really, because we had the, um. The B M, um, the five oh five.
Yeah.
So we had an excavator that added, that's what we talked about.
Okay, gotcha.
Right, so you'd have that show an offsetting revenue, whether it's intercap. Or the M fund for the excavator and that will that one set out. Do we want to put something in there? We should, if we, if you have the expenditure, I should show the revenue source.
We should do it while we're thinking about it.
Yes.
Which means we should do it while Mac can give us a number.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is we want to add in, and the excavators still road equipment, not bridge, but not, that's true. We have all the bridge equipment, it was a mostly.
Well, you're going to use it for bridges, so.
Bridges, yeah, I guess it depends on where you want it to go.
Okay, that's.
The same guys are going to be operating it either way, so.
I know.
Eighty-five percent, fifteen percent or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the main, the main reason we have a road funded bridge fund is because we have road revenue, tax revenues and bridge tax revenues. And they're separate pots and that's why we keep the funds separate.
Yeah, we had the same concept at the city with the fire and E M T P N S.
Okay.
Same guys, but different.
I'm just going to say B N or E M cap for now and not define what that looks like, but that's. Comes to be coming from, and then like I said, we have a minimum amount to pay back next year. And then the following year, we'd have to pay double.
Okay.
Whatever.
Yeah.
And talk out to, so I think that should balance that. Beautiful. Okay. Almost at the end. And so this is the. Sorry, I have to go down in order because you have so many funds, I want to make sure I don't miss anything. Usually it's like that's just junk vehicle, that just sort of shows transfers in, um, I think we may have capital outlays that are costing.
Junk vehicle is, yes, it's expensive, yep.
So we are looking to spend money from that's in reserve next year.
I was spending capital. I guess, I mean, yeah, I guess. Yeah.
Yeah, it's not repairing it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
And it's over five thousand dollars.
Yeah, the five thousand, yeah.
Yep. Mosquito, we don't really anticipate in purchase next year.
Interesting, see how the larvicide works.
Yeah, I think, um, because it's a large change in how we operate, um, it'll be a learning process for Teresa and that sort of thing, but I
Yeah.
I have a feeling it's gonna work much better.
This year could be good tips.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, um, and is, uh, the big thing will be that as Teresa does more and more of that, um, she'll have to go to training and that sort of thing, and so we'll kind of hone our targeting, if you will, over the years, and hopefully in three years, we're very efficient at hitting exactly the wet spots that
Yeah.
they read it.
How many overturned tires are there?
Yeah, well, luckily we got rid of the one at the transfer station that was our breeding ground there, so.
Yeah, and it went out on, uh, your Chico.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Do we have any, I didn't have, have any significant facility projects next year?
No, we took out the bathroom one, um, with the thought that that money could go towards newer vehicles. Um, I'd like to just see how different facilities play out before we put in, you know, twenty thousand dollars into a bathroom.
Right.
Um, not knowing if it'll then need remodeling in five years.
Yeah. Weed CIP, there's just, I don't know. I see that, but I don't see, oh, transfer in, that's just basically from twenty-one forty, that's the excess. That always gets adjusted just based on what cash looks like at the end of the year, it's just what it looks like today. Refuse.
So we don't do that anymore because we got nine sixties in.
And we don't need to, the auditor said that we really shouldn't have that CIP yet, so. Because you're crossing enterprise funds with government funds. They're like, John, Yellowstone Bridge, I don't know what's gonna, that's more, um, Kristen, I think, at this point. Are we doing anything with the bridge for next year, you know?
I don't, I don't see anything happening.
More engineering right now.
Yeah, I mean, unless we get some private funding for that, I don't see it really going anywhere yet.
Okay, good to know. BN, I'm gonna leave for now because, um, we'll have a separate discussion about the BN fund. Landfill, and I apologize, we haven't had much discussion about landfill lately, but this last year, our landfill costs exceeded the cash available and what we can get out of the trust. And the design behind the BN fund is that that would pick up landfill cash, so we're gonna have to start looking at transferring money from the BN fund to the landfill.
What is our expenses? Yeah, I was gonna, what's your expenses?
It's not just like, because all the DEQ pays for is monitoring, they don't pay for utilities.
What are the costs do we have?
There are utility costs, um, let's go down here. And, um, we have insurance is a charge, um, trustee fees, none of those are covered by, um, landfill, by the, um, money coming from First Interstate, and so when the auditors were here last year, they were like, you don't have enough cash, and we need to start moving cash, and we always, we always knew that the BN fund would need to put some funds towards landfill.
The question was whether it was a little or a lot.
Well, it's like forty thousand a year.
Yeah, so we're, it's gonna be a little, we know that could go one point four, just because of where the monitoring's coming out.
Right, because the monitor's covered by the trust, and that's where, um, we're allowed to rebalance the landfill trust, um, every four or five years, and if there is additional funding there, um, Matt can submit to the DEQ requesting release of some of the trust funds to help.
And we've done that before, yeah.
But I don't think we've had a chance to do that this year.
Nope.
Okay, so as long as we are negative cash in the landfill, we're gonna have to bring it over from the BN fund.
Yeah.
And then if we get funds released from the landfill trust, we can pay it back to the BN fund.
Okay. Is that something we need to think about doing before the end of the budget year? I don't know if there's any reason to be necessary.
It's more, um, fixing, it's more of the year-end process.
Yeah.
So I may come back to you in the next month or so and say, we need X amount of cash from the BN fund.
Okay.
I don't know that I would consider it a loan because it's still BN money.
Yeah.
That was dedicated as a result of landfill, so these are costs specifically such as from landfill.
Yeah.
I'd probably just ask if we could transfer the cash.
What is the insurance for landfill?
Well, the insurance is the property casualty, and I've been operating off a formula that was set up before I started, actually, but there, I would assume that you could have lied that lucky if somebody comes on the property or anything happens, I don't know if it's fenced or I mean, if you want to re, if you want to look at rebalancing.
I'm sure you look at that, because
Yeah.
we have one building up there.
Yeah.
But other than that, then you can't, you would never know where the landfill was.
Yeah, because that seems like a lot of money considering, I can't believe our.
The gates are locked.
Okay, so there's no access.
No.
Not for anyone else.
So we can look at rebalancing, but it's the property casualty insurance.
Yeah, that still looks high to me, but
Okay.
Considering, I can't imagine that our liability's very much there.
It'd be hard to hurt yourself there, because
It would.
the whole thing, yeah, it's just, it's just rats now.
Yeah, and there's no access anyway.
Okay, so if we were to remove it, would end up spreading out between refuse and the rest of it, maybe, right? Because you're just
One of those things.
Because the end, yes.
We could take it out, but we have to pay more somewhere else.
Yes. Yeah, because we still, the, the insurance is with the insurance, it's enterprise funds do participate in covering, like, you don't get permissive help money for enterprise funds for refuse insurance.
And this still would not be enough to, to propose taking money, that'd be in front, right? So it's, it'd be good, but, you know, not enough.
Yeah, it helps, but, um, no, because you have, um, there's the post-closure cost is outlined at fifty thousand.
And what is that? What's post closure?
That's the money, that's the DEQ money.
Is that just the monitoring?
Yep, that's, uh, that's, it voices every year.
But DEQ pays for that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, the trust pays for it.
Yeah, yeah, the trust is, they really are money.
Yeah.
But, um, and then there is, um, accounting and auditing charges, and that is for the department for tracking the trust throughout here. And then there's like a minimal utility for Northwest Energy, I guess that's all.
Uh, no, that's for the remediation equipment.
Okay.
That's right, we're still vending or something down there, if you got the trend, yeah.
Air stickers, yeah.
Yeah.
So as part of the year-end process, we'll look at that, but if I have a better idea, I'll probably bunch that into next year. But we can revisit that any year. And then to refuse.
Fifty-four ten, I want. Um, so I did up assessment fees, um, we will probably have to look at, um, increasing rates this next year. Um, at the very least, we have to do, uh, recycling that is just straight cost from the contractor, um, so that should just reflect that. Um, when you look at the dollar cost, it's not much, it goes from like seven fifty to ten dollars, um, a year, so it's not a large amount. Um, but then I would look at probably a CPI increase for, uh, both the disposal and, uh, collection as well.
What do you think that, is that gonna take into account wage, is the five, is the potential five percent what we have to include that?
My thought is we will look at doing, if the commission would like to do this, we can do a three-year, um, one where it's cost, or it's a annual increase, um,
CPI.
CPI increase for the next three years, that way we don't have to do it if next year something happens and it's one percent, it's only one percent.